And this is Dave Barton, can you hear me? Brian, can you hear me?
Sorry guys, I was muted, I can't hear you.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, I can hear you Dave.
Very good, I'm just checking, thank you.
You can hear me?
Unfortunately, no, I'm just kidding, yes, yes we can.
Can you, can you hear the seagulls at the beach Dave?
Yeah, I'm hoping that you're at least wearing a shirt and not, not just your beach wear. So. All in user, can I get your name please?
Peter Mattson.
Thank you.
Is it Dave?
It is.
Hello, Peter Mattson. Hello?
We're still here.
Okay, good, I hear you now. It's Brian Shipley, are you on?
Uh, Peter, I, I am, I think we're just waiting for the chairman to start the.
Here tonight, smoking, cell phones silent please. Exits are in the back of the room. Alright. New business, 180 South Street, LLC 180 South Street, eighty seven point three dash five dash one four. Commercial area variance, applicant is seeking area variance for side yard setback, total yard setback and minimum parking. Representatives. Here this evening.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Uh, I, I missed the question, I was having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, you represent 180 South Street?
I'm sorry, I can hear you much better now, thank you, that is correct.
Okay. So, give us a brief overview of what you're looking to do.
Thank you, good evening, Chair and members of the board, as indicated, my name is Brian Sipperly with Verity Engineering. Uh, here tonight with me is Peter Mattson, who is the owner's rep as it relates to the project. And if I can just bring the board through exactly what the applicant's looking to do, I'll take a couple minutes to do that. Uh, the applicant is DJ Direct Incorporated. Um, uh, the principal use is primarily warehousing and distribution shipping. The site that we're discussing today is 180 South Street in the town of Lloyd. Um, it is also County Route twenty two, owned and maintained jurisdiction to, to the county. Tax map is eighty three, eighty seven dot three, dash five, dash fourteen. Uh, the property itself is about six point five acres, uh, with about six hundred and twenty feet of frontage on South Street. And it is principally developed today with about an eighty seven thousand square foot structure. The zoning on the parcel is agricultural, uh, the use being warehouse is an allowed use per the current zone. Uh, topo on the site is, uh, I guess we'll just call topo and drainage, the existing conditions on the site were, are gonna sheet flow. So it's gonna be sloping from the west to the east and that sheet flow presently makes its way down to, uh, to the Black Creek. Um, site vegetation on the parcel today is, is minimal, um, just because, uh, a lot of the site is taken up by the principal structure. And some clearing around the structure and a, a road that circumnavigates the structure. So the, the, the site vegetation, just given that, uh, explanation is, is minimal. We've got a woodline buffer to the north. And obviously we've shared a riparian buffer, uh, along the Black Creek, um, along the western property line. Um, along the, the site itself, the site does have wetlands. And they are contained within that riparian buffer flanking the Black Creek. Um, the development plan that is in, uh, in front of the board this evening does not plan to encroach upon those wetlands or alter any of those wetlands. I do wanna point out to the board, uh, that portions of this site are contained within the hundred year floodplain of the Black Creek. Um, looking at the site today, uh, it's presently served with two curb cuts, um, being centric on the north and the south of the parcel. Onto County Route twenty two, the proposal isn't to change any of that access point. From a utility perspective, uh, the site is served with onsite water well, uh, and an off-site wastewater treatment system. I, I, by offsite, it is just located on an adjacent parcel that the owner has an easement. And so DJ Direct or 180 South Street would be the dominant tenant with that easement. Um, private utilities such as, uh, gas and electric, he, here the gas is, is propane, uh, but those are available at the right away. There are, uh, per, uh, a recent survey that the, the owners have done, the site is not encumbered with any easements or encroachments from anybody or any of butters. And then last but not least, you know, from the butter perspective, we've got a, a house to the north and south, um, in the same zone with a single family use. We've got a commercial building to the west. And then clearly on the east, we are flanked by the Black Creek, which is then, uh, further buffered by, uh, the golf course. Um, the proposal, uh, that the applicant is seeking is to construct a thirty thousand six hundred square foot warehouse addition. Uh, inclusive of five loading docks, uh, those building additions and alterations are gonna take place on three different areas of the building. We'll, um, we wanna share the screen, talk about the site plan, we can do that. Uh, from a utility perspective, there are no changes in the utilities, uh, proposed to service this building addition. Um, the only utility change per se would be, uh, the inclusion of fire suppression, which, um. Given where that will be, most likely underground tanks, pump systems, not really relevant to this board, but that's just what's gonna happen here. Um, stormwater, so, uh, this is a redevelopment project that will disturb greater than one acre. Um, so the, the applicant would be, uh, required, um, to have a stormwater, a SWIP. And, um. Generally speaking, although you don't see where stormwater will, will be treated and handled, um. Today, there are no stormwater facilities, again, everything sheet flows, but the requirements of that SWIP are gonna be that we, uh, treat. Um, a hundred, a treat, treat and detain a hundred percent of the impervious of the new additions and, uh, a percentage of what's existing there. So I guess in general, the stormwater, uh, post-development will be certainly better than its existing condition today. Um, from a parking standpoint, um, currently, uh, it, it is a big facility, but the, the owners have, um, eight office staff. And, uh, well, eight, eight parking spaces dedicated for office and twenty four dedicated for warehouse. Um, the, the current requirements that they have, um, in the future for this project are gonna be sixteen spaces for office. Six visitor, six warehouse and three for van, vans and buses. Um, that, that total is, is thirty one spaces, and we'll, we'll, we'll get into, that's one of the, uh, release to the zoning code that the applicant is seeking this evening. But that, that parking count demand is, is thirty one for the client. And, um, the, the difference, the, the code, uh, for the town of Lloyd is really a square footage or a gross floor area, uh, denomination of that. And, um, we can get into that later, but ultimately speaking, thirty one is what they require. They, they do a lot of busing and vanning of employees to local surrounding communities. I don't believe the project narrative was submitted, uh, with, uh, this material for this board. Since the submission to the zoning board of appeals, the applicant has also submitted to planning. So in the narrative, it does talk about, uh, operation being twenty four seven, I do wanna correct, today they're only, excuse me, today they're only at one shift. And they'll remain at one shift for some time, um, clearly being able to increase capacity and shipping demands, um, on a second and third shift if needed. From a traffic perspective, um, the daily background traffic on County Route twenty two, uh, is, is just shy of two thousand cars a day. Five percent of that number being truck traffic. If we look at the ITE, uh, tenth edition trip, trip generation manual, um, a facility of this size finished at a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. Is gonna generate about thirty nine, uh, trips in the peak AM hour and forty two in the peak PM hour. And again, that's for the hundred and eighteen thousand that's there today. Really, the additional traffic is going to be what gets generated from the additional, uh, demand or the additional square footage that's being added to the building. But again, it's generally de minimis to the background traffic that's there. Um, any kind of lighting that'll be proposed, um, for this facility, whether it be pole mounted lighting, uh, or wall packs will certainly be dark sky compliant. LED technology, uh, with the right kind of cutoff fixtures to keep light where we want it and light where we don't want it. Um, again, just in summary, that was just a little bit about the existing conditions of the site, what the applicant is looking to do on the proposal. And clearly, we are in front of this board this evening for relief. The three different variances, and I'll just highlight what they are, turn it back over to the board. Uh, the first is relief to the minimum side yard setback, thirty five foot is required. The development plan provides twenty seven point two. Um, the second is relief to the total side yard setback, requirement being one hundred foot. What the plan provides is ninety three point six. And last would be deficiency for the required parking, sixty nine required, thirty six proposed. Chair, that's really all I have for an introduction to the project at this point, I'll turn it over to you and the board for any questions at this point.
Alright, thank you, uh. I, I do have a few questions, um. One, why, why wouldn't we need a coverage variance for this, Dave?
Chair, is that a question to me or to the?
Well, I'm, I'm asking the building department and I'll refer it to you, um, because where you have, uh, your red. Existing structure removal, where it says section B. You show that as impervious. That right now is not impervious, that is pervious, that's a grass area and a gravel area. Um, in that location. So, y- your, your plans are misleading.
Uh, uh, I, I guess, is, we have a couple of questions, I guess, I, I chronologically, I guess I'll, I'll go and address that after. David addresses your question on lot coverage.
Okay, uh, so yes, I think that we're probably going to, uh, as I looked at when Paul and I were looking at the maps earlier, I think we're going up nineteen percent. Um, they're already well over eight, eight percent is the maximum allowed in the zone. Um, so I think that they're probably gonna be looking for, um, building.
And total.
Building coverage, but my understanding was they were going down in terms of total lot coverage, is that right Brian?
Um.
I'm seeing.
Or am I, I don't have a map in front of me.
So, yes, uh, uh, our site plan, C one of one, uh, along the right-hand column is going to have a site statistics box. Um, and at the bottom of that box is going to be the word lot coverage. And we've got the site broken down, buildings, pavement and green space. And again, uh, the building is going from eighty six eight to eleven, uh, to a hundred and seventeen four. So again, we are from a lot coverage, the building is presently thirty point six nine percent of the site. And the proposed is going to be forty one percent of the site. From a pavement perspective, hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, being roughly forty percent of the site. That's being reduced to seventy one thousand six seventy three or twenty five percent, I think Dave's point. The green space about eighty three thousand five hundred being twenty nine percent is going up to thirty three to quantify those numbers. Chair, I believe you asked me the question about the section B and it being misleading. Uh, we've done a site investigation, um, that area back there consists of rooftops, pads. And what, what appears to be grass to you is actually some, uh, broken through pavement and gravel, uh, kinda coming through. Uh, from a stormwater perspective and in the existing condition, it is not to be labeled grass, but that's kind of for more of a technical review. Um, but I just wanted to address that, 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 that question, as you thought the plan was misleading.
Um, I, I am familiar with the site. And the area that you're labeling section B. Is pervious right now, it's grass, it's dirt, water will penetrate through it.
Okay, I, I, I think, there, listen, I, I, there, there's some semantics involved here and all due respect, as it relates to stormwater. Gravel is treated as impervious, even though water flows through it. As it relates to the definition of how we wanna look at lot coverage, and if there's a debate on that, sir, we can certainly, um. We can talk offline to determine whether those site statistics and how those percentages change. I don't know if this is the right form, but I, I certainly, it with respect to your comment, I think we could take that offline with the, uh, building department. And, and, and if indeed, the, the applicant needs to add to the list of variances required, we could certainly amend that application. All I'm indicating to you is I think we've discussed with the building department what we believed the deficiencies of the site were. We did indicate that we violated lot coverage, but it wasn't already in the existing condition as David pointed out. And it was up to the building department in the end to tell us what variances we needed. So tonight, we're here asking for these three commensurate to what I just mentioned. And indeed, if they're, if, if the board is somehow seeing it to be a little different, I don't think we're fighting you on that, I just think there's some semantics around. That, that's all.
Okay, and then I guess my question is to Dave. Dave, do you feel that? What he's proposing is? The only variances he requires are the ones he is asking for this evening?
I, I think we're gonna have to get, um, uh, uh, cause they have spoken to me about this in the past. Um, and I do think that we're probably going to have to include the building coverage as well, it's a non-conforming, uh, coverage now. They're increasing it, the code allows them to do so, um, more than fifty percent. So I think that they're gonna, I think it's eleven percent more than what's existing now. So, but I am unclear, and maybe Paul can help us with this, whether you, whether they be requesting relief from the eight percent or from the thirty point something percent that they're at now. I don't really, I, I don't know how the board feels about that, I've never had to worry about this in my fourteen and a half years in the town.
I'm not sure.
You know what I mean, because it's, the, the building exists now, they're going to, um, in my opinion, improve. Cause I, I, I know that area in the back you're talking about, um, it is well overgrown now. And, uh, it looks like they're trying to make the building. A more useful building for them by increasing its size. If, if I had to make a determination off the cuff, I would say you'd have to go from the thirty percent. Give them the, that extra piece beyond that, because the building is existing now, therefore it's a, it's an existing, non-conforming sized building for the zone. With non-conforming, uh, coverage. So if the board felt that, that it was appropriate for you to review that, that extra eleven percent. Would be a reviewable action on your part. That's, that's my off the cuff determination.
Have to mull that over.
Yeah, maybe Paul can help us with that down, down the line.
Yeah. Okay, um, and as far as, uh, the side yard, twenty seven point two, the, the property next door. Is it the same owner? Or is it a different owner, where your septic system is?
It, it is a different, it is a different owner.
So your septic system is on a separate piece of property?
That is correct.
Paul Van Cot, is, is that legal?
Um. Depends on the arrangements that they have, I would assume, man, you probably have some easement for the use of that septic system.
That is correct, there are land rights that have been granted to 180 South Street, again, 180 South Street LLC is the dominant tenant in that easement, they have the, the dominant rights.
Okay, and, and. Good, Paul?
Yeah, that's something that, um, you know, the planning board can work with, and we, we would definitely be looking at those easements and make sure that. Uh, everything is as. Explained.
Okay.
And I just wanna point out to, to the board and, and to the chairperson that, um. That is certainly an existing condition well before, I believe, even the current owner's, uh, acquisition of title on the property. Um, it is a, quite a large raise system, um, I believe it's as, uh, is as large it is, it is in terms of flow rate design. Uh, but in addition, the size, I believe, is, is, is probably due to getting the base elevation of stone out of the floodplain would be my guess. But it was an existing condition, and if the board has any concerns, we can certainly ask the applicant, uh, to provide some easement language to help, uh. Alleviate that concern to, to either board.
Excuse me, uh, excuse me, my understanding. That septic was put there for the, the past. Business because they didn't have enough sewer to supply the building, and I thought it was an, an additional property. To be consolidated. This is all new to me.
Well, I guess, I guess I'd like to bring this back to, to, to the issue at hand, I mean, a lot of these issues that we're talking about, uh, in my opinion, are not in, under the purview of the zoning board. The applicant is not asking for relief to do with that parcel. As it relates to the, the encroachments to the setback or the relief to the setback as it relates to that neighboring parcel. I, I guess if you're questioning whether or not those appurtenances serving the site should even be there, I, I guess it's a whole different discussion. But, um, I, I, I'm not knowledgeable of the history, uh, to, to educate this board on why that's there. Or when that meets and bounds in that lot created to serve that, were not then consolidated into 180. Um, Peter and I can certainly try to get some of that chronology, excuse me, chronology from, from the applicant if they do know it. Um, and try to provide that to the board, I just, I just don't have any of the backdrop for you guys at this juncture, sorry.
Okay.
Could you go over these lines of where the additions are going, please?
Sure, David, um, you want me to share my screen, do you wanna bring something up on your end? How, how best, uh, do you think this should, should be done here, given this hybrid model?
Okay. That work for you?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see my mouse moving around, I don't think you can, but I.
No, we can't, do you wanna show your screen?
So I think, um, if I just understand the question correctly, and if I can repeat it, were, were you asking me to just start to define what all these lines on the plan mean? Or, or specific to where the building additions are, are going, sir?
Show me the additions.
Okay, so let's start at the north, which would be the right end of the site. Right, where the mouse is right now, where you see the red hatching. Presently, there is no building there, that is just a pavement area, uh, well, I guess let me back up. This build, you, you guys probably have more history of how this building got to be what it was. I've certainly walked in and around the site and it, it is certainly an amalgam of a number of different building additions. With multiple finished floors on the inside, it might look normal from the outside, but it is definitely complicated on the inside. So that little jut out there on the north, um, believe it or not, has a couple of overhead door access points to, um, to, to that area and, and is a paved area. So what you see in the hatching there is that paved area or that voided area of building, uh, will, will, will get filled in and then it'll get squared off. Okay? Um, as we move, let's say, if, if north is twelve o'clock, we're gonna now move to the west side or the three PM side of the clock. And what the chair was referring to as the back, you know, the mechanicals, the gravel area. Today, all those, uh, air, all those items, whether they're equipment mounted on pads, small building additions, sheds. Um, all those things hatched in red will be demolished and removed. And, uh, a portion in section B will be finished off as warehouse. Again, what, what you're really starting to see here in the. And uh a portion in section B will be finished off as warehouse again. What what you're really starting to see here in the mosaic is. The building from overhead is not square, and the applicant's looking to make the best use. And and utilization of the interior of the building by squaring it all off. Now, if we move to the south end of the site. Not really shown in hatching. Um, yep, thank you. And right now, that's where loading takes place today. And the trucks actually have to maneuver themselves to face south presently today. So the loading docks are gonna be on that. Um, on that south wall. So this addition, this kind of this jut out peninsula is the only. Feature of this building, proposed building addition that kind of makes it not square, but that is going to be where they're gonna move the loading area today. Can I answer your question?
Paul?
What about section A? That that's all addition? Well, or that's existing?
Section A is existing.
To the right hand of section A, that brown spot in front of the hatch marks is gonna be additional building?
Nope, that is currently building today. And what what the board doesn't see here is what's happening on this plan in the Z direction or the elevation roof height. This building has multiple roof heights. And it causes problems with drainage and, you know, I say problem, but anytime you got roof lines mismatched and things happening, we've got areas. So. What what this applicant needs in this model is cubic volume. And so part of the uh in addition to the building additions, there's going to be portions of this building where the roof is raised. However, the the proposed height will be less than thirty five feet and not require a variance. Uh, that is certainly being worked out right now uh with Peter and some of his other sub consultants that are helping to um assist the applicant in this endeavor.
Um, I I believe Paul was referring to the northeast, I guess we would call it, portion of the building.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a building right now.
Yeah, that's building. Yep, it's it's it's, oh, I'm sorry. No, you. Thank you. That that is a parking lot today is elevated. Thank I stand corrected. Uh, that that is a parking lot area that is elevated today. And that will become a building. Thank you for uh correcting me on that.
That that back piece is building and in front of it.
Yeah, no, I got I got turned around. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Um, do you know the width of one bay of loading dock? You show five bays for.
Yeah, hold on, Peter. What 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 pitch are they gonna want on there? They're gonna want a uh, it's usually an eight by ten. I don't have that defined on the plan at this level, um chairman, but we can provide you with what that is.
Okay. I mean.
Uh, is is your concern that the truck pitches is looks too tight to you, or is there something I can help answer regarding that?
Uh, well, right, right now, right now, you have a five bay loading dock and you're requesting relief. If that was a four bay loading dock, you would need no relief. On either variance.
Okay, so so um I I think I hear you, chairman, and I I think where we're going here is 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 generally. Um. You know, what whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method or what what else can be done, correct?
It it is, and our granting the least uh possible.
And again, I'm, I'm, yep, so uh I I I I think you very, very good point, chairman. Um, I I think we would um. We we wouldn't, Peter and I wouldn't be able, we would not be able to be in a position this evening. To determine whether four is going to work for the client. Uh, they've asked for five. That's the proposal in front of the board. Um, I I do want to let you know that those. Yeah, I I certainly will call those the kind of the low hanging fruit type of questions. You know, we've we've gone around with the applicant and said, hey, you know, we could. Probably trim two of the three variances by doing this. Um, as it relates to being their their design consultant. You know, we're we're not too far in the cookie jar on challenging them on, you know, are you sure you have the right dock to square footage ratio to run your business? But clearly, I just think we're not in a position this evening to to determine whether or not we we the applicant could live with four, but I. I hear you loud and clear. If that was truncated, uh, we wouldn't need it.
Correct. Um, and the last variance as far as parking. I know you had given us a a rundown of. The spaces that were needed for sales, warehouse staff, visitors. Um, and I understand for the use that it would that you're proposing. That all makes sense, but this building has changed hands and uses. I can't even tell you how many times. So if we grant this, that goes with the land. So we would be married to that number of parking spots. Uh, absolutely works for your application, but. It may not work for the next. So we're going to be very reserved. Um, at least I will be as far as the uh variance for parking.
Chairman, I have an idea that I'd like to run by you um and the board. I am very well aware of your concern. It's a very valid concern. Um. Especially when, you know, boards have to think about not only the the variance being asked right now. Uh, myopic to the plan in front of you, but but what what you as a board have to kind of live with from here on and out. Would the board be okay if we could demonstrate where banked parking could go and potentially how it could drain? In such a way, uh, I mean, clearly, the 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 way this this is a large building and. You you know, we're 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 clearly past the eight and ten percent, and and it's this existing condition now that I think everyone's trying to figure out, well. How do we make the best use from a tax dollar perspective? And how how does the user come in and try to use it without now, you know? Well, over where things are from a zoning perspective, the town of Lloyd wanted them to be, right? Um, but clearly, it has been what I call purpose built. Um, the the building has been built in such a way that it's only gonna be good to certain users. And the only thing that, I mean, ge- given where the building is and its footprint even today. Um, the only thing I could think of would be some satellite parking lots that would be located on the interior of the ring road. Uh, chair, that would be maybe accessible to some employee warehouse uh and and, you know. Type of access where there could be a couple of security doors. Which might be needed anyway for proper ingress and egress, but they could be card key card controlled and things like that as well. Um, but but certainly uh that that is a concern. The site, the site is tight. Site is tight even presently, yep.
Okay, um. You know, just kind of off the cuff. If your flow is circular around the building, I'm seeing the uh southerly, the south line along the septic system. We could possibly put some parking in there or make that green space and put parking to the rear of the building. You said you have access back there that could be employee. I I'd like to see the the parking up. More spaces.
Uh, I'm sorry, you said like to see the part, I just missed, I couldn't hear you.
More more spaces. I'd like to see more spaces uh for parking for for reasons we had already stated.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Would the board, uh, Brian, it's Dave Barton from the back of the room. Uh, would the board be amenable to poss- the possibility of banked parking in the rear? Um, you know, if if you were open to the to the idea of um, you know, requiring more parking. Uh, but uh, you know, for future uses, but maybe as part of your, if you're interested in this idea, maybe as part of your review. Um, that the planning board was during their review would uh, you know, would would look for some banked parking for future. You know, future spots, because I think the back of the property, John, you and I know is pretty flat. And you could probably angle cars like they do with the front right along the back of that building.
Right, but when you do that, when you when you do that, that becomes impervious. So we'd have to offset that with some green space.
That's true.
So we we'd actually be covering more of it. By requiring more parking, we'd be covering more of the lot. So we'd be looking to offset that. On another location, and I'm seeing the southern, you know, your southern, your southerly line. Your trucks would be coming around, pulling in, backing close to the building straight up. You you could have. Similar to the jut out where the where the uh illustration of the truck is now, something like that on the other side where it would be more of a uh. A roadway rather than a wide open area.
And and just to add some color to that, um, there there are some products out there. Call them green products, right? So we've got permeable pavers. We've got honeycomb products that could be used that if if we. Really are trying to thread the needle by solving one problem but creating another, uh, we could look into things like that. But chair, that's a great, you know, uh, I'm just not familiar. Nor do I want to kind of get sidetracked with what the code says, but. As long as you guys don't think there's any requirement for us having parking within that thirty five foot setback, which there may be something in your code. Uh, citing that parking needs to be a certain distance away. Now, the good news is it would be distance away from a septic system, right? So it wouldn't be like headlights and car doors would be slamming next to a house, but but absolutely, I like I like the idea of being able to. We could, we could cheat a lot of spots along that southern property line. Um, but.
You you actually kind of misunderstood what I said. I was not saying for the parking to be on the southerly side. That would be green space. The parking would be to the rear of the building.
Oh, I was talking both. Yes, I I got you and and.
And I like where you're going with the imper- with the uh pervious parking with slotted pavers. And that could be in the rear of the building, and then you would not need to offset it. On the southerly line. I'd like to see it offset on the southerly line because I think it would be more aesthetically pleasing. Um, but again, that's. For another board.
So so I think that I think the ask is that the applicant certainly doesn't require the parking in his use today. I think I've heard you loud and clear, and that we will certainly try to bring a plan back and work with Dave Barton before we do. Um, to try to throw some ideas out before we see you again. Does that sound fair?
Yes, very much so. And I'd like also um to explore. Removing one bay area to get you further into compliance. Um, for your side yard and your total side yard. And again. We need to explore every option to have the minimal relief. So. You know, w- we need to explore that. We need to explore only having four bays as opposed to five.
Well, I I I guess the the term minimal goes away if I if I can drop us. If I can drop a dock, I I may be able to meet the thirty five, in which case, if I meet the thirty five, I.
You also meet the total.
I may have met the other one. However, what is the board typically define as minimal? I mean, I've seen other boards say fifty percent of the ask. I mean, so does this board have a?
We we do not have a hard and fast minimal. It it's a moving target. We we shoot for the minimal in every instance.
Fair enough. Okay, so so let us, um, I think we've heard you loud and clear. It's we we need to certainly talk to the applicant, technically speaking, in terms of what their business model is, the dock ratios needed for their. For their operation. Clearly, if it isn't, we'll be back to talk to you about what can't it can't be done, and if and if the applicant can live with that, chair, then I I think. Uh, the revised plan that you'd see would would be a little different in our discussion.
And you would not need.
You can increase the parking to. Oh, what do we need here? If you can get the parking up to where it needs to be, you wouldn't have to come in front of us for that either. Um, and I'll I'll have a discussion with Dave. Tomorrow about uh coverage and and whatnot, and uh, you know, perhaps we can.
At your convenience.
We can get the applicant involved as well.
Thank you.
Will there be a problem for us to walk the outside at early without getting arrested?
I I couldn't hear that. Was that directed towards me?
Um, my question is, if we go visit this piece of property and we walk around. Around the building, not to go in it or anything like that, I like to get, I like to walk the outside. Walk around and see exactly what is proposed physically. Uh, is there, is it, we have the right, the the privilege of doing this with your tenant?
Um, so a cou- couple of things. Uh, I I am familiar with some boards that they'd like to caravan outside of a meeting together and and go see the facility. Um, whether it be a weeknight or a Saturday, that that's convenient. I've I've seen that. Uh, if that isn't what this board wants to do, um, Peter and I can certainly make accommodations with the owner, and I don't think that would be a problem, but I think we just. Need to make sure, um, again, the applicant's here to work with the town. I so I I certainly don't think they're gonna be adversely uh or or act adverse to your request.
Okay.
This is Russ Gilmore on the board. I just want you to know and the board members to know. I haven't told them yet. Uh, yesterday I met with Ruben, and Ruben gave me an exterior tour of the facility.
Thank you.
Were you able to hear me okay?
Yeah.
Brian, yes, I met Ruben. Uh, do you know who Ruben is?
Oh, I I heard you. Uh, some members of the board, I don't know if there's one microphone. Some people sound very clear, and others sound faint and more distant. So if you see me doing this, that's me trying to get closer to my speaker. Uh, but I did hear you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just wanted the board and you to know that he accommodated my visit and said whatever we need, he'd be available.
And like like I said, I don't think it'd be a problem. I I just think uh if you could put your request or maybe your. Uh, availability of when you're gonna do it uh into Dave Barton, he he can get ahold of Peter or myself, and we just give more than likely give the owners or owner a courtesy heads up. That during maybe a certain window, certain members of the board might be dropping by. That way, they just don't uh have concern for people who they think are strangers. So. We can certainly accommodate that.
Okay, so Dave, you'll have a contact information for. All right, I I am very familiar with the site, so. Yeah. Okay, uh. I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for our next meeting so we can get the ball rolling. Um. Because we can keep continuing if we have more questions.
So moved.
Russ? Have a second? Paul? All in favor? All right.
Close.
Okay, so. The public will have an opportunity to speak at our next meeting. Um, if you can. Uh. Look at what we've asked as far as uh dropping a dock, adding parking spaces, the uh the easement. Or the affluent or septic system. See you in a month.
Chairman, board members, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Business, Rosie Thomas, Station Road eighty six dash four. It has been removed. Old business. Hearing. Stewart's thirty seven thirty three Route nine W. Ninety six point nine dash one dash thirty three point hundred sign height and lock coverage variance. Applicant is seeking a variance of one foot, ten inches sign height. Applicant is also seeking relief of nineteen percent lock coverage. Everyone is fairly familiar with. This. Sorry, forgot. Everyone is fairly familiar. Uh, we did have some late correspondence. From Mr. Haran. Um, did the board get an opportunity to review? Letter? Did? Okay, uh. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Tyler Fronte from Stewart's. Um, with me tonight is Ken Worsted from Creighton Manning, um, who performed the traffic study. Um, that was reviewed by CPL, the town, um, New York State DOT, and the county. Um, so I just, um, I guess I'll go back to the board. Um, again, the variance is requested. I think the board's familiar with it, but. Um, we're requesting at this point a one foot, ten inch uh variance for sign height. and then 19% relief for lot coverage. So I'll turn to the board to see if they have any questions. If not, we can open up to the public. And if there's any traffic comments, we can certainly address those comments that were raised from Mr. Haran.
Okay, does the board have any comment or any question for the applicant? Okay. All right, now I stopped the public. There's, does any member of the public wish to be heard at this time?
So this is Jim Haran. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board, for considering the submission that I had made. And basically, the gist of, the sum and substance of the submission is that, you know, the board is looking at a fairly substantial variance with respect to the impervious surface on the property. We had discussed that. And with respect to the traffic study, what I pointed out is basically that the number of traffic, the amount of traffic generated by the site is is a combination of the square footage of the building as well as the number of fuel dispensers that are proposed. As I review the site plan, it looks like there's four pump islands with four pumps on each, with a pump on each island with a dispenser on each side. In looking at the IT data, there's a breakout for facilities that are greater than 10 fueling stations. The planning board in reviewing this, you know, has had some issues regarding particularly left turns into the site from the northbound lanes of 9W. And, you know, this board had raised some issues with respect to traffic. You know, in the past, there was some discussion that this board doesn't really have the ability to look at the traffic issues in conjunction with this application before the ZBA. However, I don't think that's necessarily correct in that here, because the expansion, you know, the proposed expansion of impervious surface permits additional fuel dispensing locations, which, you know, would create additional traffic to the site. So I'm not asking this board to look at the issues of where the entrances and the exits are. But I think it would be incumbent on the applicant to provide some additional information to the board so that it could judge how much impact this expansion, proposed variance would have on the traffic to the site just from a trip generation point of view. Stewart's has a location on 9W down in Milton, which has two pumps and four dispensers. That location is on a site that's roughly twice as large as this site. So, you know, the applicant is seeking at least eight fuel, fueling positions. And, you know, I think that based on the size of the site and some of the other, you know, Stewart's locations, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate, particularly in light of, as the chairman noted in the past application, that the board has an obligation to grant the least, the least variance possible. And again, I think that the variance here could conceivably be generating additional adverse impact from a traffic point of view. So with that, that was the sum and substance of the letter. And if, you know, I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. As traffic relates to the lot coverage issue, I believe the traffic study that they did is is what this board reviewed. I think we're okay with it. As far as the impervious surfaces, the applicant has worked with us to reduce to the best of their ability their coverage, at least I feel they have. The rest of the board, I believe, is on board with that. We did see comment from the planning board and the town board. Neither board responded. Is that correct, Dave? We've had no input from either board. Is there any other member of the public that wish to be heard? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Paul, second? Russ, all in favor? Carried. Okay, so I think the first thing we need to do is go through the seeker. And Paul Van Cot, stop me if I'm doing this backwards. We'd have to go through the seeker first, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Could I just ask one question? Is this an uncoordinated review?
It is.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
All right, so I've read the seeker. If the rest of the board wishes to read through it, does it need to be read into the record, Paul, or is?
What we typically do, Mr. Chairman, is to, Dave has a copy and he can run you through the part two. We received a part one of the short environmental assessment form from Stewart's. And the job of the ZBA, because this is an enlisted action, is to go through the part two of the form and make sure that you're comfortable with the answers to those questions. If you determine that there's no significant impact, significant adverse environmental impact, it would be appropriate for you to issue a negative declaration. We've prepared a draft resolution for the board to consider. So, Dave, do you have the part two?
Thanks to Sarah, yes. I got Sarah.
Would you mind running through the part two for us, please, Dave?
For you, John?
Thanks, buddy.
You betcha.
Thank you.
This is the short environmental assessment form, part two of the impact assessment. I will read the questions. There are two answers possible from the board, and I'll need to hear you say it. No or small impact may occur. That's one answer. The second answer is moderate to large impact may occur. Question number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No, small.
Small, noted small, I hear. Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land?
I would say it's going to be.
This is only for area.
Right, just for the area, I would say no. And for the sign height, well, we don't need the sign height here, but.
Will it propose action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will it propose action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Minimal.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Or public, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will it propose action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will it propose action resulted in adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and fauna?
No.
Will it propose action resulted in increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will it propose action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based on your answers, we will check the box that you have determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Do you agree?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so as the board had time to read through the seeker to determine a negative declaration? Okay. Pertains to seeker, like to entertain a motion?
As reviewed.
Right, you have a draft resolution. And that would essentially confirm the negative declaration with respect to seeker.
Right, the board had gone through the draft you had prepared, Paul? They're comfortable with it? So the motion was made by Paul?
He answers the question, he answers the question seeker. He's just got them saying, so as soon as we vote this.
Right, that's what we have to do. We have to do a motion. Hold on it. Do I have a second? Russ? Okay.
I'm sorry, to be clear for the record, the board has moved and seconded a vote to do a negative declaration approving the resolution that you have from Paul.
That's correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right, and is he asked for me? Paul Gargulo?
Yes.
Yes. Bill Brown? Absent. Russ Gilmore?
Yeah.
Alan Hartman? Yes. And our alternate?
Yes.
It is a yes. Okay. So that's the seeker. Now we need to do sign and lot coverage. We should read through this, correct, Paul?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, just so it's part of the record.
Would you do the honors, please?
I would be pleased, Dave. Whereas Stewart Shops, and this, we drafted based on the straw poll that the board undertook at its July meeting. And I conformed the resolution based on the minutes that were provided. So whereas Stewart Shops Corp., the applicant has applied to the Town of Lloyd zoning board of appeals for variances to redevelop lands as a convenience store with self-service gasoline. The project involving property designated SBL numbers 96.9-1-32.100, 96.9-1-32.200, and 96.9-1-33.100 located at 3733 New York State Route 9W in the Town of Lloyd, Ulster County, New York. And whereas the site is located in a highway business district, zoning district designated by the Town of Lloyd zoning code, the zoning code, and whereas the applicant has applied for area variances, pursuant to the dimensional requirements of the zoning code as follows. Zoning code 13A and the dimensional table, lot coverage permitted is 40%. Proposed is 59%. So the variance requested is 19%. Also, zoning code 100-28H2A2. Sign height permitted is six foot. Sign height requested is seven feet, 10 inches. So the sign height variance is 1'10". And whereas the ZBA's action on the applicant's project is an enlisted action, pursuant to seeker, and the ZBA has determined that no significant adverse environmental impact will occur. So no environmental impact statement will be prepared. And whereas the ZBA referred the project to the Ulster County Planning Board for comment as required by General Unit's full law, Section 239M, and is requested by the County Planning Board. The ZBA has explored alternatives with the applicant for addressing potential stormwater impacts, including minimizing the lot coverage for the project and the use of permeable pavement. And whereas the ZBA closed the public hearing on the applicant's variance request for the project at its August 12, 2021 regular meeting, after hearing from the applicant and providing an opportunity for the public to be heard. And whereas the applicable standards for reviewing the applicant's requested variances for the project are set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B. And whereas, as required by New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B, making its determination on the applicant's variance application, the ZBA has applied a balancing test that takes into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, has weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. And whereas in applying the balancing test and standards required by New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B to the applicant's requested variances, the ZBA makes the following findings. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, granting the requested variances for the project would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to neighbors. Specifically, the ZBA found that the proposed redevelopment would improve the property and would be consistent with neighboring uses. Two, pursuant to New York State Town Law, 267-B3B2, the benefits sought by the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without the requested variances. The ZBA found that the applicant has reduced the lot coverage to the maximums extent possible, consistent with the project's purposes, and has proposed only the sign height necessary for visibility of the sign by the traveling public. Number three, pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B3, the requested variance for the sign is not substantial. While the requested variance for lot coverage is substantial, the ZBA found that the applicant has reduced requested variance sufficiently at the ZBA's request. Four, pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B4, granting the requested variances would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. With respect to the lot coverage, the ZBA found that proposed stormwater control measures will minimize environmental impacts from the project. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B5, the applicant's need for the requested variances is a self-created difficulty. Whereas pursuant to the above findings and New York State Town Law, 267-B3B, the statutory balancing test demonstrates that the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community arising from granting the requested variances is outweighed by the benefits to the applicant of such grant. And whereas the ZBA has the authority under the zoning code, Section 100-56, and New York State Town Law, 267B, to approve or disapprove the requested variances. Now therefore, be it resolved, but based on the applicant's application and supporting information, including the June 24, 2021 site plan and the public hearing on the applicant's variance request, the applicant's request for variances for the project are granted pursuant to New York State Town Law, 267-B3B and zoning code 10056. And be it further resolved that these variance approvals shall run. shall run with the land and shall bind any successor or interest to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be filed with the Town of Lloyd Town Clerk within five days of its adoption and a copy sent to the applicant. And be it finally resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Paul. Like to entertain a motion to grant the variance as, both variances as read? Alan? Second, Russ? It's an eye from me, Paul Gargulo? Bill Brown is absent. Russ? Alan? Come on? Two for two.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience. Off to the planning board. Public hearing, William Shawn, 21 Telsin Avenue, 88.17-7-8. Area variance, applicant is seeking an area variance for three feet of side yard relief for an addition. Ah, you can stay right there. Okay. So... Is everyone familiar with? Does any member of the public wish to be heard? Board have any questions for the applicant? He, he's asking what you need the three feet for?
Oh, okay, making up everything on the same plane, right? That's the one?
Right, right, okay. Okay, so if no, no member of the public wishes to be heard, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Closed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, has everyone read the draft resolution, does there need to be any changes?
I thought in the minutes it said that the addition's gonna be on the rear portion, yet we're looking at the side yard variance?
But it's closer, it's, it's on the side, remember, we, they're squaring it out.
I drove fast, I know what house it is, and I'm looking, I was like, okay, what am I looking at? Okay, very good, thank you. Just wanted to be clear, I want to make sure I know what I'm voting.
Paul, would you like to do the honors again? Want me to do it this time?
Oh, be pleased. So this is a resolution granting a variance to Shawn Williams. Whereas Shawn Williams has applied to the Town of Lloyd Zoning Board of Appeals for a side yard setback variance for in addition to his home, the project involving property designated SBL number 88.17-7-8 located at 21 Telsin Avenue in the Town of Lloyd, Olster County, New York. Whereas the site is located in our one-quarter zoning district designated by the Town of Lloyd zoning code. Whereas the applicant has applied for area and an area variance pursuant to the dimensional requirements of the zoning code as follows, uh, Section 100-13A of the zoning code in the dimensional table, where a side back, side setback is, uh, permitted at 15 feet, what's proposed is 12 feet. So the side setback requested, variance requested is three feet. Whereas the ZBA's action on the applicant's project is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, so no environmental impact statement will be prepared. And whereas the ZBA closed the public hearing on the applicant's variance request for the project at its August 12th, 2021 regular meeting, after hearing from the applicant and providing an opportunity for the public to be heard. And whereas the applicable standards for reviewing the applicant's requested variance for the project are set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267B. And as required by New York State Town Law, 267B, in making its determination on the applicant's variance application, the ZBA has applied a balancing test that takes into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. And whereas in applying the balancing test and the standards required by New York State Town Law to the applicant's requested variance, the ZBA makes the following findings. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, uh, 267B3B1, granting the requested variance would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to neighbors. What, number two, pursuant to New York State Town Law, 267-B3B2, the benefits sought by the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without the requested variance. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section 267-B3B3, the requested variance is not substantial. Number four, pursuant to New York State Town Law, 267B3B4, granting the requested variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And five, pursuant to New York State, uh, Town Law, Section 267-B3B5, the applicant's need for the requested variance is a self-created difficulty. Whereas pursuant to the above findings in New York State Town Law, uh, 267B3B, the statutory balancing test demonstrates that the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community arising from granting the requested variance is outweighed by the benefits to the applicant of such grant. Whereas the ZBA has the authority under the zoning code in New York State Town Law to approve or disapprove the requested variance. Now therefore be it resolved, but based on the applicant's application and supporting information, including the June 5th, 2021 project plans and the public hearing on the applicant, uh, variance request, the applicant's request for variance for the project is granted pursuant, pursuant to New York State Town Law and, uh, the zoning code. Be it further resolved that this variance approval shall run with the land and shall bind any successor or interest to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this, this resolution shall be filed with the Town of Lloyd, uh, with the Town of Lloyd Clerk within five days of its adoption and a copy sent to the applicant. And be it finally resolved that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Paul. Like to entertain a motion to grant the variance as read? Paul? Second, Russ?
Sure.
Eye for me, Paul? Brown is absent. Russ?
Yes.
Alan? Carried. All right. See you, Mr. Barton. You. Any, has everyone had an opportunity to read minutes of June 10th? So... At this time, we're going to table. Board can familiarize themselves with mail, so we can, uh... Yes, um, I'd appreciate it. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Russ? Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Van Cot, thank you.
Thanks, Paul, appreciate the help.